At this time, I'll call a meeting in the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. I'll ask that one change be made, and that is that let's we remove Agenda Item Number Seventeen. We'll deal with that at our next council meeting. Is there any other changes to the agenda that any member of the council has or staff? If not, we'll operate under that agenda with the removal of Agenda Item Number Seventeen. I'll move then to Agenda Item Number Two. Agenda Item Number Two is Consider the Approval of the Minutes of the Work Session and Regular Meeting. Both were held on December tenth. Council has amendments at both of those meetings. Are there any corrections?
Move approval, second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they have been presented. Steve, you have a question?
Yeah, I might need you, Kyle, because my password does not work.
I did? It doesn't work. So then I forgot your password.
I told him I canceled it. He thought I was kidding.
Greg, why don't you just use your password?
I did. Apparently, it only works for me.
Figure that.
Did you do the forgot password?
I did.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm. Oh, the base needs to be.
It's great. No. Technology.
I thought we could share and say this. You might make meaning to take.
Steve, can you see the agenda on your screen?
I can see so much.
That's a lead.
That one?
Yep.
It'll work.
Got your catwalks on?
I blew the cases, so we'll go one at a time.
Little baby G. We don't even have commercials to run.
Yeah.
You could start singing.
Yes. No, let's not start that.
Alex, you need that screensaver that says, "Experiencing technical difficulty. We'll be right back."
Somebody out there could sing a Christmas carol.
I know I hit it right. I can just.
On the first day of Christmas.
We can do voice bullets if you can see the agenda in the attachment.
I'll try it. Let's shoot your forty-five minutes.
Yep, it does. Shouldn't have said it.
Yep.
Jinxed it.
It was a capital I, not a lowercase L.
Ah. In Kyle's evaluation, we can mark him down as a high score for Works Well Under Pressure. Dr. Meister, on the other hand, we're still out.
Well, that's comforting news, patients.
He's not an emergency surgeon. He plans. And he's in. Beautiful.
Tell me when you're ready, Steve.
It is okay. I got the packet.
Ring is open. Okay, so to refresh where we're at, we have a motion seconded on the table to approve the minutes from the work session and regular session. We will move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle.
So we'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. They include Consider the Resolution Approving the Changes in the 2020 Fee Schedule, Consider the Approval of Various Liquor Licenses and Tobacco License Renewals, Consider the Approval of the Taxi Cab License Renewals, and Consider the Approval of the Bills and Project Payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ to approve all of the items on the consent agenda discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Seven. Consider the Resolution Providing for the Issuance and Sale of the City's General Operating CIP Bonds, Series 2020A, in the proposed aggregate amount, principal amount of $6,500,000. So presenting this, to start with, is Annette Storm from our finance department. Annette.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in August, and I apologize, in my agenda item, it stated July twenty-third, but it was in August, the city held a public hearing on the five-year Facilities Capital Improvement Plan. The council did authorize a maximum principal bond issuance of 6.5 at that time. So tonight, we are looking to have the council consider how to finance the city hall project. Staff is recommending that council approve the resolution for the issuance and sale of the city's GO CIP bonds to finance this project. Here tonight, to go over some of the details on the bond issuance, I have Terry Heaton with Baker Tilly, which is our municipal advisor.
Thank you, Annette, and welcome, Terry.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, tonight, we are here to ask for authorization to proceed with the bond issue to finance the project that you're anticipating for the new city facility, the new city hall. And so tonight, we're asking to go forward with $6.5 million of general obligation improvement plan bonds that we would receive bids on at our offices on January twenty-eighth, and I will come back again, seeing what the weather's like. I will come back either way on the twenty-eighth, that evening, for approval of the lowest bid. Just to note that, you know, as you know, we've had really good luck because of the, in the bond market, because of your double A credit rating. And the part of this process would be, again, to go to the rating agencies and get the rating approved or affirmed. In the bottom of this recommendation, it's all the details of the sale are included in that. There's a graph that shows where interest rates have been going, and it's a lovely graph if I were sitting in your chair, because it continues to just trail off of late, coming down to some of the lowest rates in five years. So I think your timing is impeccable. The authority to issue the bonds, and as Annette said, you had the hearing already. So you're ahead of the curve there. You've had this in August. Sometimes we're trying to do that simultaneously with selling the bonds, but you guys are ahead of the curve there. You have the approval to proceed and issue a general obligation bond. In addition to that, sometimes when we're scheduling this bond sale, we have to look at when payments are due and sync it up with your first levy. And in anticipation of doing this, to hold it out, there's already a levy, so we won't have to add to your bond issue or try to build in there capitalized interest, which is sometimes a struggle. So you'll be saving money on that side as well. So I think a lot of planning, from the financial standpoint, has gone into this, and you're sitting in a very, very good position with that. The bonds themselves are twenty-year bonds, and the interest rates that we're looking at today, I should note that some years, we make a really big deal about whether it's a bank-qualified issue or a non-bank-qualified, because there was a bigger interest rate difference for that. So we'd always try to make sure that if we could, we kept all the bonds under ten million. And I know at one point, we were trying to hurry and make sure they actually sold yet this year, because next year, you're going to be over. And there's such a small interest rate, if any differential, that we don't have to do that, even though you're going to probably have more with that when you're looking at the PFA loan. The interest rate is about the same. So that's all post-two thousand seventeen tax law changes that have kind of, you know, that have made the yields almost the same. So these are, even though they are non-bank-qualified, we're looking at an interest rate for a twenty-year bond of about two and a half percent. So I think a little great timing and a lot of planning have made this a very positive recommendation at this time. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Questions? If not, you have the recommendation.
I move approval of the resolution providing for the issuance and sale of the city's general obligation CIP bonds, Series 2020A, in the proposed aggregate principal amount of 6.5 million.
I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion on that motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Russ?
I don't know if this is the proper time, but to go through the individual dollar amounts on the sheet.
Go ahead.
I really have a problem spending about $300,000 on IT, security, and audio equipment. I don't have a problem spending $300,000 on a parking lot adjacent to the municipal building, the Baldwin Lot. I firmly believe that the IT expenses, security expenses, and the audio equipment should be paid out of city budget. We shouldn't be bonding for that for twenty years. I was a homeowner, and if I need to put a new furnace in my house, I'm sure not going to bond for it for fifteen years, put it on my mortgage for fifteen years. I would suggest that we take that out of there, leave the $300,000 in there, but, and as we had talked previously, Annette, put it toward that parking lot in the back that is desperately in need of repair, and finance the IT and the security and the audio, because we know that once the IT, a lot of things are going to change between now and twenty-four months, eighteen months. Security, as we all know, probably, we bit it out today, we put it in next month, and it's going to be outdated in six months. So I just don't think we should be spending $300,000 on those three items, or whatever the case would be.
So part of that question, then, Annette, or Terry, you can clarify if, you know, the, we're authorizing the total amount, and the line items are interchangeable?
Correct. We just wanted to make sure that we had at least the six and a half million to proceed with the full amount. City Hall, I've got other costs that we have that are well over the six and a half million, and that's, I was just trying to, to kind of show that we have at least enough expenses to do the full six and a half million, because we have, we do have bond issuance costs that, you know, are not included in that, even though they're paid with the bond. And we, like you said, we do have possibly a parking lot, furniture, construction testing, some various other things that, you know, they're interchangeable. It's just I wanted to make sure that we had at least the six and a half million.
Well, and again, I just, I would like to see that money spent on, as we talked before, that Baldwin parking lot, which is, it would be a prime time to do it, because as with the demolition and things with the changing with the municipal building, that lot's probably not going to be used that extensive, so there would be a time to put $300,000 toward that lot.
Correct, yep. And when we get along to that process, it'll still have to come back after, if we decide to do the parking lot, you know, follow the procedures and everything for bidding that out.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. Close the voting, and that motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Annette. The next agenda item is the Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Report, as well as Considering the 2020 Schwan Regional Amateur Sports Center Agreement. With us tonight is the CB Director Lauren Deitz. Lauren?
Thanks, Council Mayor. As Bob mentioned, I am here for our contract renewal, but because I am here, I thought that it would be a good opportunity to kind of review the entire year, and especially one item in particular, which was our process review, which you've all received now. I believe Sharon sent that out to all of you, and kind of highlight some of the areas that we've been working towards to improve our operations to ensure that what happened with Darren does not happen again. And I, in speaking with Russ, I know all of you know what happened with Darren, but this, some of these changes we've made, I can kind of highlight as we go of how he was able to kind of work our system and how we've changed that, so we won't have that problem going forward. Okay. There we go. Okay. So we hired Abdo Eken Myers, and that was a recommendation from the city, and they did a process review for us. They completed that process review in March of 2019, and as I said, you guys have all seen that report, so you're aware of the areas that they addressed. We did have quite a few findings. A lot of them were small, minor changes, some were bigger organizational-wise. So some of the big things we looked to do this year to make sure that we were more in line with what we should have been doing via the recommendation, we did hire a new accountant. That accountant is hired by the Chamber of Commerce, but we contract her for her services. She had far more experience than our previous accountant. She had experience with taxes, our QuickBooks system, payroll, all of those items that weren't necessarily there with our old accountant, and we've seen a lot of changes there, which has been great, and I will go into that a little bit deeper. The other big change we've made, and we're still in the process of changing, but as of January one, we will officially be split off from the Chamber of Commerce on our financial side. So we will continue to share a building, but everything else will be completely separate outside of using the same accountant, because we are still paying for those services. But prior to, when we had our process review done, our bank accounts were together. We knew that was a big issue. That was one of the big changes we've made. As of January one, we'll be moving our payroll services to Hoffman and Broppes. We felt like we needed more professional services there, and they were able to take care of everything for us. So we are going that direction, and just really taking that step to ensure that we are two separate entities, just operating in the same building. We have our own insurance and all those things required for us to continue maintaining our business on our own. The other big change we made, which it seems crazy that we didn't have before, but we do have a treasurer on our board now. We weren't operating that way. It was written into our bylaws to have one, but unfortunately, that wasn't a process Darren was following, and we know now why. So Jake Tur did step up, and he has been my treasurer this year. And with that, we meet monthly, if not twice a month, to go over our financials, approve vendors, things along those lines. And he has to sign off on all my invoices, and that gives me the opportunity to show him actual, specific things that I'm working on. We can go a little bit more in-depth before we bring it to the board, and then the board also sees my magazine ads, different forms of advertising that way. He is coming off my board in 2020, but we have picked up Luke Teetz from Bremer Bank, so he does have a financial.
His appointment hasn't been made yet.
Yeah, well, we're hoping to move forward with Luke Teetz, yes. He is our projected treasurer for next year, because we wanted somebody with a financial background. So as you looked at our process review, these are some of the, like I said, some of the minor things that we did fix, or were in the process of fixing now, emailing invoices versus mailing. The one issue we've had that we haven't been able to resolve completely is our vendor list. We're currently sharing that with the chamber because of the way our books are running. So I wasn't able to go through and clean up as much as I would have liked to, but we are being a little bit more thorough when we add new vendors. So with what happened with Darren, what was happening is, because he was making his purchases on credit cards, we weren't adding these vendors into the system, so there was no approval process for the vendor in the system. We no longer allow that. I can't make any advertising purchases on my credit card. We choose to do everything through invoice, so that my treasurer does have that second tier of approval, just to ensure that we're on the same page of who we are and aren't willing to work with. Data input, again, a lot of this came with having a new accountant. She's gone through and cleaned up our books. We're going to be recoding a lot of our stuff in 2020, because our classes don't make sense, just to make sure that our financials are a little bit more clear, and that helps us with future budgeting and projects, so that we know where we're spending dollars, where we should and shouldn't be, and it's just really helped clean up the process. Same with our financial statements. We're having issues with when things were happening versus when we were billing and when we were putting it into our financial reports. So that's all been cleaned up with our new accountant. And again, my board treasurer is much more involved now. He signs off on all my invoices, and then we did reduce our credit card limits, so that I think now we're down to like a thousand-dollar limit versus the, yeah, we had a very high limit before, so we've reduced that. And basically, any of my expenses not on my budget over 500, I'm asking for full board approval. If it's not budgeted, we're seeking further approval on all of those larger purchases. Some other things, online banking, our accounts were a little messed up because of some staffing changes. Those are all been resolved. The ACHs, we don't actually have a lot that we do, so that one hasn't been a big deal. It's really been our payroll, but we do now receive payments from the city for our ACH, which was a suggestion from Abdo Eken Meyer. Banking fees with our new accounts, we're working through those. Our CDs are now properly documented. Budgeting is done through QuickBooks instead of, Russ is familiar, we used to do these lovely little spreadsheets that just accounted for a lot of human error. Now we no longer have that, because we are going to be going through QuickBooks. And then just a little bit more documentation with our events, so that we know attendance, numbers, cash flow, so that we're able to reconcile that more clearly. And then our vendors, even if they've already paid, because some do pay in advance for our events, we're still invoicing even at a zero, so that we can tell our numbers moving forward, easier to plan for next year's events, and just keeping a little bit more financial accountability for myself. So moving more into the Red Baron, if there are any questions there, I can pause and...
Thank you, Lauren. That was obviously representative of a lot of work by you, as well as the entire board, as well as city staff, so thank you for your work in addressing all those things to mitigate the chance of that happening in the future.
Absolutely.
Are there any questions regarding the, that portion of Lauren's report?
Nice job.
And as Bob said, I'm really appreciative of my board and Russ as our council rep. It's been really nice to have that input, and they've put a lot of time and effort into making sure that we're doing the right things moving forward. The listing of the types of advertising events and whatnot that we do take care of. So right now, with our contract, we are paying for the digital billboard here in town. We use that for all sorts of different events. We do welcomes for sports teams. We use that for, we'll use that as a portion of sponsorships for different organizations. It's been really beneficial. We do some magazine advertising, website management, all the social media and events calendars. For example, we are in the Minnesota Wild Game Day Book this year. I do have a photo of that farther down in my presentation. And then a Sports Destination Marketing Magazine publication. That one was really focused on trying to get bigger events here. And in my opinion, it's been successful, because we actually did approach, or we were approached by an outside organization, Northland Hockey, who will be hosting a tournament here in April. So that was really nice that we're going to be hosting our first off-site tournament here at the facility, and hopefully, it's because of some of this advertising that we've been doing, in addition to the operations that Maha runs here. Events-wise, we had just over, about fifty hours over what we had last year for rented hours, and of course, these reports aren't final, because I had to pull them December one, not end of year, but this should be pretty close. Some of the big things we do, we hosted the gun show, the craft beer festival, and curling tournaments this year. All three went very well. The craft beer festival was huge for us. It was kind of a shot in the dark to see if it would take off, and it has. We're really looking forward to our 2020 event with that. Another big highlight is we did have the Minnesota Youth Hockey Highlight Game. You all saw that. Again, that was because of what our facility can do, and they approached us, and we are really thankful that they were able to host that here in Marshall. Sponsorship, a lot of this is staff time. I spend a good portion of the spring working on Dasher sponsorships and working with our major sponsors to, one, not just sell them, but to make sure that they feel like their contracts are being represented well. So this year, we did have two of our major contracts come up. One has been finalized moving forward. The other will be finalized hopefully this week. So we spend a lot of our time and effort on that process. And then some other just kind of CBV functions, but they really do focus on the Red Baron and our other sports facilities. I've been working really heavily with our hotels on some, especially guidelines for teams who are coming to town. We told them we'll become the bad guy, so we'll tell the hockey players what they can and can't do in their hotels, versus the hotels having each individual having their own guidelines. So we do things like that, and we're kind of just the in-between for our hoteliers and our organizations. When they have issues, they come to us and vice versa, and we've kind of become that mediator in building that relationship. We also do some scheduling and blocking there for tournaments. For example, we have the baseball, state baseball tournament again this year. We've already blocked 210 rooms for that, and it's just something that we can take off the plate of the sports organizations here in town. And again, sports organizations and relations, we've, from the sports commission side especially, have really taken on trying to pull other organizations under our wing and see what they can do. This year, we hosted the volleyball tournament in the arena. That was fantastic. What other type of things like that can we do moving forward? And then just some city support projects. Sharon and I work together on especially some communication marketing-type plans. I've taken a heavy role in the branding project as kind of part of this process. So those are just things that we do, not necessarily that are written into the contract, but in addition to what we do. Financials, I just did kind of a breakdown of the contract money we get. This is the percentages of direct spending, and then just some of the indirect spending we have. And I wanted to show you that we are spending a good chunk of money on the marketing and events side. Branding project, obviously, this year was unique, because we did help fund that. But these are areas that, if we wanted to see an increase in one area or another, we're happy to adjust according to our budgeting schedule. Another big one that really should be in direct spending, but I don't have a dollar amount for it, is our staffing. In addition to myself as the director, we also have a marketing and events coordinator. She does spend a lot of time on things related to the Red Baron and other sports organizations as they're doing some planning moving forward. So those are how we looked at our 2019 spending. And again, this is as of 12/1, so it's not year-end financials. As I mentioned, we are in the Wild Game Day Book, so every game they had, we had an ad in there for the Red Baron. We always think this is a good representation, just because we're trying to build that hockey reputation here in Marshall. So this is an ad that we spend pretty heavily on every year. It gets into the hands of, I think they say, like, 200,000 or 300,000 people, or whatever it is. So we, this is the type of advertising we're doing directly related to the Red Baron. And then moving into 2020, this is kind of how we foresee our year going. Right now, we do have every weekend from February 28th to May 16th booked at the arena, which has been huge for us. Our goal was always March, April, and all of a sudden, we're moving into May. And another big example we do have, so in 2018, we had one wedding. 2019, we had three. This year, we already have six booked. And weddings are kind of direct revenue, because they're not sponsored days, they have to rent it for a day and a half. They have to rent it for a day and a half, so those have been really nice to get on the calendar. The other nice thing about weddings is they're often in the summer, so when other things aren't happening. I have one in June, two in July, one in September, two in October. So you can see that we're starting to get more and more things coming to the arena, different types of things. Again, I have on there things like the craft beer festival. We've started that as a small event at the arena. Now we're going to make it a little bit bigger and continue to grow that, and hopefully that will turn into hotel stays because people are coming to the community, drinking all day, hoping that we get some hotel stays out of it. Another big one, we did get the Bantam Regional again this year, and like I mentioned before, the Northland Hockey Tournament. The only thing that would potentially happen there is if it doesn't fill, then they will cancel it, but getting awarded it for now is a great start, and we'll start promoting that now to try and get those numbers up there. And that's typically played in bigger communities, Sioux Falls, Fargo, things like that, so. Some of our goal areas, we really want to increase the more expo meeting space usage because we do feel like we've kind of gotten a grasp on the event side of things. In 2019, we had some different things come into the arena. A lot of them are renewing for 2020, so things like the SMSU Education Fair, typically that'd be held on campus, but we actually hosted it this year. And then the Runnings Vendor Show, they did renew again for 2020. And those are weekday events, which is really nice because it's not pulling my weekends. And then the chamber has discussed moving two events to the arena as well. One of those tastes in Marshall, you've all been to it at SMSU, trying to kind of expand that event and supporting it. So those are things that are coming up. Other goal areas, obviously to increase hotel stays. By the way, our formatting works for our events. Right now, we're really good at those one-day events and maybe two-day, but it's drawing people closer. How do we shift that a little bit to get more hotel stays? And we found another, and I think a lot of people can attest to this, sports are huge for us, so how we can work with those teams to get more teams to our tournaments that are coming from the Fargos. We're going to really try and capture the Iowa market this year, especially because Brookings is struggling right now with their hockey, so we're trying to pull some of the teams that typically would go there. So Iowa, South Dakota, North Dakota will really be our target this year. And then again, new uses on the expo floor, things like the Southwest Challenge. We know that that was an accident this year, but worked out really well for us. And then Marsh as a whole, getting other organizations to host tournaments here in town. Soccer, volleyball, dance, whatever that might be. And then again, for my 2020, this is where I'm currently at budget-wise. I did shift a few more dollars into marketing. A lot of that goes with the branding because we know with the new brand, we will be doing a lot more advertising. We shifted more dollars that direction. I also put in a line item for improvement projects because I know something we discussed last year is that there always is going to be improvement projects at the Red Baron and those facilities, and we feel like as a partner, we should start budgeting some of our expenses that way too, so that we can assist when those projects do come up in order for the arena to continue to grow. And then again, our staffing is always going to be our indirect budget, but it ultimately is a direct budget line. And then just visit Marshall as a whole. 2019 really was a rebuilding year for us because of everything that happened to our organization. We spent a lot of time just working with our local businesses and trying to rebuild that reputation. These were our goal areas that I wanted to focus on, and ultimately, I think we did accomplish most of this. A lot of my business owners were very upset, especially restaurants, shops. We've done a lot of things to try and make up those relationships, and we really do feel like we're moving in that direction. And then kind of just feeling out the market. Because Darren wasn't doing as much of the marketing as he should have been, we really had to figure out where we should be and what we should be doing, so we spent a lot of time doing that this year. And then now, as we move, something I mentioned before, we had decided that rather than try and host this one big $50,000 event, we were going to do all these little small events that could grow as we do. So craft beer festival is always going to be my main example. We sold out at 325 tickets last year. This year, we plan to move to 500, add two hours, add more vendors, and then just continue to grow that. Another thing we added this year was traveling trivia. That was actually an initiative to help out the businesses who felt jaded by what Darren had done. So every month, we go to a different bar and we host trivia. And our first one, we got about 60 people. Now we're up to close to 150, 175. We're maxing out restaurants. Our businesses are so happy. It just gets people in their doors, gives them something to do, and kind of breaks that mentality of there's nothing going on in Marshall. We're actually getting some SMSU kids now too, which has been awesome. And then our other two smaller events, Haunted Tower, some of you probably heard about it. It was our haunted house out at Merritt Center. Very thankful for the city for letting us use that facility, by the way. Kind of did it as just a way to have something to do on Halloween, and it ended up being huge. We had over 1,000 people in two days, people from all over. You know, I was talking to people from Tyler, Canby, tons of different communities who came to walk through a haunted tower. Stand in line for two hours for a 15-minute event, so that went off really well. And then we've continued to just do some smaller events with local businesses. So we kind of feel like we found that niche, and now we're just going to continue to grow on those events, and ultimately, we would like to have something every month, and we're close. We're getting there. So again, now that we have gotten through our rebuilding year for 2020, we're really looking to grow. With the new branding project, we want to help with the recruitment of new residents, businesses, visitors, and a lot of that will come down to awareness and advocacy. Our advocacy in Marshall isn't great right now, so just building that reputation of we're a good place to live, work, and play, that's our goal. And then continuing to build those partnerships with some of our SMSU, Sounds of Summer, the already established organizations here in town who we know need assistance, and we're here to help them. And then again, with the Lyon County 150th helping out with that. And then we are adding a tourism grant program this year. So we had decided, and I think I mentioned this previously, but with the restitution dollars we received from Darren, we decided rather than just putting them into our budget, we're going to offer them to the community. So as of January 1, if we get it approved, we are going to have an application process where a business can apply to host an event, make improvements to their facilities, as long as it's related to tourism. Those dollars will be available directly to their business rather than us just saying yes and no to certain sponsorships. This gives them the opportunity to get a little bit more creative and work on some projects. And then just continuing to expand our events. So again, growth, just trying to move forward and continue the process as we move on. So that was just kind of our year in review and what we're looking at for 2020. So with that, I would ask council to renew our contracts so we can continue to help the Red Baron grow and the community as Marshall as a whole to grow.
Thank you, Lauren. Are there questions the council has either on Lauren's report or specifically about the contract?
I just have a couple of comments here, and they're good comments. I didn't realize, you know, I know I read these reports, but I just did the math here quick. You're renting an average of 10 hours every day of the year, I mean 9.7 hours.
Yeah.
That impressed me, actually.
Yeah.
I did not realize the Merritt Center was used that much. And I know the grow on that is quite a challenge because now we've got to get you up to 15 hours, but still 10 hours or 9.7 hours every day of the year, that's 365 days a year. I think it's pretty good for that facility and the grow on.
Red Baron.
Red Baron, excuse me.
And we are very fortunate that a lot of that is hockey.
It's still rented. It's still being used.
Yes, exactly.
The other comment you made, and I've made this comment before, is when you had your haunted tower, which I think was wonderful, I did not make it out there.
Next year.
Next year I will. But to hear that the people come from Canby, Tyler, we are the big communities of them.
Yes.
You know, it's funny, we'll run to Sioux Falls, but people from Tyler, Canby, whatever, they come to Marshall.
They do.
And I'm glad to hear that because they're coming to Marshall supporting our community.
Yeah.
So I think those events are wonderful. So they're waiting two hours in line. I'd rather have them wait in Marshall than at Disney World.
Yeah, and you know, those types of events are great because we have so much room for growth.
Yes.
You know, we can bring in food vendors, we can bring in entertainment, we can do all those things.
It brings people to Marshall, and they maybe go to a movie afterwards.
Exactly.
I think that those, that just impressed me. Thank you, you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Other questions? Craig?
Mr. Mayor, just another comment, and sitting on the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission Board, and Lauren and the CVB does an awful lot of work working with our associations and the cooperation and the support and the attitude there and the change in the last year is phenomenal, and I really appreciate all the work that they do. I got a comment yesterday and today from people who work the tournament, the hockey tournament, and this is the CVB, but it's also Maha and the families and the people that work. The concession decision that we made to leave that in Maha's hands is phenomenal, and it does a couple of things. It has the people who are serving the guests at Red Baron, it has people that understand what those families need because the same people that work in the concessions also travel to other arenas and understand the pros and cons of being treated well or not being treated well. And the feedback that we get there, not only just on the face of the facility, how it's operated, the way the events are put on, and just the class, the quality of that, when the other communities like Mankato, New Ulm, Wilmer, Worthington are all shooting to knock us off to be, to try to get a piece of what we have because of what we have, is a good compliment. And so Lauren and her group plays a key part in that, and Maha and the other members and our staff and stuff, the people that work on, Alec and the technology people, every facet that works out there got complimented. I couldn't believe how much positive input I've heard back, and I just want to thank the folks that do that. That's just, it's just a star act, and it really reflects good on the community.
Thank you, Craig. Russ?
Again, I just want to thank you publicly, Lauren, for your commitment, your enthusiasm, your energy this past year has been unbelievable, and I probably, to the rest of the council, I probably haven't expressed that enough in my reports from CVB, but thank you. You've done a wonderful and wonderful job. Just one other typo thing I need to think of.
Sharon had pointed that out. Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Any other input? Steve?
So the only comment I have is the repatriation, re-networking, and building community again through the trivia. I go to them, God, there's a lot of competitive people in Marshall.
[laughter]
And a lot of smart people in Marshall.
I hear that pitter-patter group is awesome, huh?
It is amazing how many people are...
And having some issues, they're winning too much.
It's amazing. So that was a great idea, and as you can see, it's done amazing things, and I mean...
Yeah, and expenses are low and the value's high.
And it's fun. And it's fun.
Any other comments or questions, or questions about the contract? If not, I'd enter a motion related to the contract.
Seconded.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ to approve the contract for the 2020 Schwan Regional Amateur Sports Center Agreement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Discussion on the motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll move then to the next agenda item. This will be considered the acceptance of donations to the Parks Department for the fiscal year 2019, and we have a number of those. Sharon, are you going to start with this?
We have Preston Stansfield.
So I'd ask Preston to come forward from our Parks Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Like the mayor mentioned, this is just recognizing most of the donations to the Parks Department and to the arena for 2019. We also had Kiwanis Club and the Carter Strong in that earlier this year that wouldn't be included in this. So I'll just quickly run through them, just like they're on the board there. The Marshall Area Hockey Association donated $4,493.90 for new speakers in the Lockwood rink. Some of you might not know that when we built the arena, we took the old sound system from the old rink and incorporated it into the new rink, and then when we got the new sound system on the Reinhardt rink, and then you go to the Lockwood rink, it was just not a good transition. And they knew it, and speaking, it sounded bad, music sounded bad, it was just not good. So they paid, that was the total cost, they paid for it all. The Marshall Sunrise Rotary Club did a $2,000 donation for installation of playground equipment and ADA surfacing at Legion Field. The Marshall Baseball Association did the same thing, an amount of $1,000 for installation of playground equipment and ADA surfacing. And just touch base on that, that was the playground equipment we bought last year with a grant through Game Time. We didn't get it installed this year because we were waiting to see how the pool stuff evolved, so the goal will be to put that in in the spring of 2020, and we have, I think we were short like $7,000 to get it fully funded, and we have all that money now. So we'll move forward with that, all the equipment's here. The Marshall Area Youth Baseball Association did a donation of $1,000 for shade screening over the bleachers at Independence Park. If any of you have been to the games up there, over the years, we've done several things. There used to be chain link fence, and then the snow would hang on it and bend it, and there used to be wind screens, but it didn't really provide shade. So this is designated, I sent an aerial picture to the company, and they literally cut a screen in a triangular shape to fit exactly over the bleachers. We was hanging it up and take it down. Should last 15 to 20 years. That was a 50-50 cost share with MABA and the city. The family of Erica Schmidt purchased a flagpole for $2,250 out at Independence Park that is now installed in honor of Erica. Her kids spent a lot of time out there playing baseball, and we didn't have a baseball or a flagpole out at the baseball fields. So it's right when you walk in, it's a black anodized aluminum pole with a stainless ball, really nice looking, and we'll be getting a plaque on that, we're working on that now. American Legion posts 113 in the amount of $1,969 for a flagpole to be installed at Independence Park that's out on the island by the Veterans Memorial piece out there. The VFW posts 742 in the amount of $1,969 for a flagpole also at Independence Park. So there's a set of three flagpoles out there. We had a wind storm, I don't remember, in May probably, that sheared off the US pole, and I thought buying one new one, it would look discolored, so insurance paid for the US flagpole, and then the American Legion and VFW bought the other ones. And then the Marshall Noon Rotary Club donated a new portable sound system that's like speakers and wireless mic to be used wherever, at other city events. We've used it at the Fire Hall, we use it at Liberty Park, we use it out at Independence Park. Light of the Night's actually using a speaker system out there for music during their weekend stuff, so just whatever city event we want it to be used at. The exact value of that, I'm unsure of. So all in all, like I said, with the Carter donation, Carter Strong donation of the courts, and then some of them earlier in the year, we're very appreciative to get these donations that allow us to improve our facilities or maybe add amenities that wouldn't be an option for us otherwise.
Thank you, Preston. We certainly appreciate these organizations and individuals in the organizations that contribute to the community, and thank you, Preston, for your organization of the projects that provided the opportunity for the investment from these organizations.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we acknowledge and accept the donations to the Parks Department for the fiscal year of 2019.
I'll second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item. This will be agenda item number 10, to consider the resolution adopting the tax levy for 2020, and immediately following that would be to consider the resolution that would adopt the budget that would be supported by that tax levy for 2020. Once again, Annette.
Thank you. So tonight, we're looking to adopt a final tax levy for 2020. Staff are recommending that the final levy remain with the preliminary amount in the amount of $7,56,113, and this just kind of goes off of Administrator Hanson, had a couple of presentations over the past few months to kind of go over the specifics as to why we're leaving it at that $7 million. So there hasn't really, there has not been any changes since the preliminary for the tax levy.
Sharon, anything to add?
Nope. This is the resolution that was presented at the Truth in Taxation last week. As you are aware, we did not have any public comment during the, or following the Truth in Taxation public hearing, and staff recommends no less than a 3.99% levy increase for 2020.
Thank you, Sharon. John, you have a question or a point?
No, I'm just going to make a motion...
No, I'm just going to make a motion to accept the, approve the resolution as submitted.
Second. Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
This is a good number. When we looked at the other cities throughout the state, we're doing really well. There's a lot of cities that are doing upwards of double-digit percentile increases. A lot of them are 6%, 7%. So coming in at 4% is really good. Hopefully, we can keep that going, but this is a really good one. I would speak in favor of this.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I would agree with Steve and I visited Sharon on and off about this as we worked through it. And I think the staff worked hard to get it to 3.99. I think the staff and us as a council are being forthright with our levy. You know, I don't want to pick on other organizations or other elected officials, but we're not, you know, there's no special assessments tied into this levy. There's no cut of services in this levy. And I think at 3.99, we worked hard to get it to that. And we did it very transparently so the public doesn't lose any services. And so...
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, then would be the resolution that would adopt the budget for 2020. Are there questions about this resolution?
Who to approve?
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
Just to repeat the same comments, I think there's a lot of work put in by the staff. And thank the staff for all the effort they did put in and the, you know, the hard times and making some of the cuts and the changes. And it's appreciated. So thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Now we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Thank you, Annette.
I worked you over so hard on this tonight.
Yeah.
Agenda number 12 is the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Once again, Annette.
Thank you. So here, we're reviewing the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. This pretty much serves as a guide that lays out the capital expenditures for the next five years by departments and as well as by their funding sources. I did include two different reports. And we're really just focusing on the 2020 as we're kind of starting to clean up and hopefully get a little bit better at planning the next five years. But a lot of it is based on the funding that we have available. So we try to put, the finance staff tries to prioritize and fit as much as we can into the limited budget that we have. So the first report that I had attached, it's based on the funding source. So we can really determine what projects we can afford to do with the, when it says levy, that means it's a $400,000 levy that was just approved for 2020. So a lot of the projects are just kind of fit into there. We try to make it only equipment as our funding is really limited and we try not to bond for the equipment. Sometimes that's not possible if it's a large piece of equipment. So the bonding levy impact, that would be the equipment or projects that are tied strictly to levy or have a levy portion in it. So if we go then to page number 376, this one is projects by the departments. And so we kind of want to have kind of a general understanding for, not only for the council, but then for staff to kind of look forward to 2020 as to what to really start working on. So I guess I'll, if anyone has any questions, I do have a couple of staff members here if there are specific questions about whether or not to proceed with the next step of the
Questions the council may have? Done?
Probably not really a question, just kind of a, not even clarification or whatever. You did use the term guidelines, and I think that's very accurate. This is, you know, what Jim was just talking about and the transparency. This is a way of being transparent, what we had planned to do for the next five years. It's not carved in stone. It's, you know, it's our best guess at this point. And, you know, somebody wants to look at what, to think the trend is going to be, this is a good way of seeing it. So thank you.
Yep. This is just the plan. We still have to follow the city's purchasing policy and the state statute, depending on the amount of the project and/or equipment.
Craig?
Yeah, not to drill in too far, just a question out of curiosity. Glenn, the airport parking lot lights upgrade, that's going to LED, right?
Yes.
Is that got MMU participation?
Yes.
So we get the, and so part of this stuff is we're actually leveraging other investment because we get the energy savings dividends on that also, correct? Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
The only other, you know, I have a couple of comments. I know we visited with Annette and Sharon and this earlier, Russ and I did, but as we bring this equipment forward, a lot of it, I know we hear all the time, oh, it's so old, it's so old, which is fine if it's old and worn out. A lot of this diesel equipment that's on here, they should be running hours. I mean, they'll run forever if they have low hours on them. So as you bring this stuff forward, bring forward the hours that are, and this is, you know, basically, you didn't since nobody else is here. You know, the hours on the equipment, because as you know, diesel equipment can run for a long time. So we can justify why we're replacing it. And it gives more, again, it goes back to that transparency thing. Gives us more transparency to the public.
Last year, I started keeping track of all the cost where we teach us the equipment that I repair. And I could have brought that in, I should have brought that in.
Yeah, and that would be good to get it to the minutes and so we could see that.
You know, I understand diesel run forever, but the rest of it, our number one killer is salt, you know, that as well as I do. And the equipment, I tell you, it's screwed up, shaped, something.
And a breakdown, yeah, and a breakdown of the repairs would be good because then we can show to the public, this is what it's costing us, so it doesn't make sense to keep it, or it does make sense to keep it.
I'll give you an example like that. Smoke where I got in, I think it's next year, a big order from the table where I checked in the last year was $22,000 in that piece of equipment. So, I mean, I do have record, I was starting in 18, so definitely I could add that to it. And I thought I did on the justification when I first did them, but maybe I did get to have it.
Perfect, thank you.
And it's possible that not all that information is presented at the council too. So I think like on, if it's equipment, generally goes to the Equipment Review Committee, and I think they drill into the detail.
Yeah, it's, the transparency is getting very good. You guys, it's wonderful.
And again, not to drill down too far into micromanagement, but the, and this is a ways out, but in 2023 at Legion Field, the bathroom upgrades, there's two of them and the one, they're really close together. So, you know, I'm sure that's going to get evaluated whether or not, that would make sense to have that one rather than two. And then the other kind of general comment is, and John talked about this as a guide, but with some flexibility and recognizing that, you know, the council committee had studied and then kind of put on hold the whole consideration of enterprise fleet management. And I would assume that those fleet vehicles that would be in here, including squads, that if that would ever be adopted, that, you know, we'd consider that funding and as part of that.
Absolutely.
Other questions about the CIP?
Mr. Mayor, one of the other things that Councilman Lozinski and Sharon and Annette and I talked about when we met was the parking lot situations. And again, it seems like I'm talking about parking lots a lot, but I know we had in 2021 resurfacing a lot of the park parking lots. Nothing against parks, parking lots, but I think our priority has got to be our city public parking lots first because that's showing the public that we're making good use of those public dollars. Not saying that the parks parking lots are not important, but I think we have parking lots in the downtown area and city that are concrete parking lots that are in desperate need of repair. So that's just, and again, that's for 2021 and beyond. So I think, just to bring that up for discussion later on or for information.
Other questions or points? If not, if not, then the action item here would be to consider the approval.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John to approve the items on the comprehensive improvement plan, CIP. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 13, declare surplus property and consider the donation policy to nonprofits. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I did include in the packet photographs of surplus property from the existing city hall. Some of the furniture is somewhat built into space and some of it obviously is movable. We didn't itemize it, but I would estimate that most of the furniture individually is less than $250. Collectively, there might be some that may reach $1,000. There's not a lot of value there. In fact, our Public Works Director spoke to the local auction firm about potentially having an auction. And he essentially said, do not waste your time. It's, you're not going to get the value after the point of when you have to pay us. So there would be marginal success. So we haven't exactly determined the process for getting rid of some of this equipment. We probably eventually will list it, maybe do a garage-type sale since it is in the garage, most of it is anyway. We've also had some interest from the library on some of the, some of the property, and we might have other interests from nonprofits. I did include a nonprofit policy. There was a state statute that was enacted in 2016 that said you needed a policy. I don't believe the city had one on file. This is a League of Minnesota Cities model policy. And essentially, the ordinance which deals with surplus property is, covers a lot of the items as well. So the policy references back to the ordinance 2-4. So based on the pictures, the recommendation for staff or from staff is to declare the items that you see as surplus property and authorize the staff to follow ordinance section 2-4 to rid the city of the surplus property.
Thank you, Sharon. Questions for Sharon?
So a lot of the pictures that we were given of office equipment, that's the kind of surplus property you're talking about here?
That is the surplus property. It's all-inclusive.
Well, I could be wrong, but I did look up the Minnesota statute and that I think that pertains here. And they use the term surplus equipment instead of surplus property. And they actually define what it means. And according to the statute, it says surplus equipment means equipment used by a local government public works department and cellular phones and emergency medical and firefighting equipment that is no longer needed by the local government because it does not meet industry standards for emergency medical services, police or fire departments, or has minimal or no resale value. So I think specifically, they refer to it as surplus equipment, and it's only certain types of equipment that qualify under their definition. And I looked at some information about the legislator who actually proposed the change in the statutes. And again, I think it refers to surplus equipment as property used by public works departments and used by emergency and medical services, police and fire departments. And I did happen to look at the recommended policy by the League of Minnesota Cities. And in their policy, they actually define and include the definition of surplus equipment. And according to them, again, they define it exactly as it is in the statutes. First of all, surplus equipment, I think our first effort should be always to sell it because we use taxpayer dollars to buy it. And if we can sell it and get some taxpayer dollars back, that's what I would be in favor of. And so the question then is, do we really need this policy at this point? We've had surplus property before and we haven't had this policy. And second of all, we want to make sure that if we do have a policy, it complies with state law. And so I would recommend that we send it back to staff and possibly the LNO committee to look at this and make a determination as to whether or not we do need this policy. And if so, to make sure that the policy actually conforms with state law.
That's fine. But I still need to get rid of the equipment. There's no public safety equipment. We would never give or resell cellular phones. We would likely take it to the police department and have them shoot a bullet through it because there's data in those, in those devices. So if that's, if that's the interpretation of the statute, that's fine.
Well, most of the...
We do need to get rid of the equipment the garage has. It will be a staging station for the asbestos removal. The garage itself has asbestos in there, and so we need to get rid of it. The value of these items are minimal.
The, you know, a lot of this equipment is furniture. There's some maintenance-type equipment like a snow blower and things like that. But I think we were probably all looked at that picture of the chairs from the council.
That's what I think those should come here and we should put these, you know, on the, like at the restore or something near it.
The school is looking at new chairs for this particular meeting space.
Those chairs actually are OSHA compliant, these ones are not, so...
I don't think I'd have fallen out of one of those high beds.
Don't lean too far back because you will fall.
Okay, well, can you turn the spring up on those?
We've had some interest in those chairs too.
So can we just call this property we're going to sell into the surplus property? That, you know, just, because I agree with you, Sharon, this stuff has to move to keep our process going or it's going to end up in the garbage.
There's a couple of options. We could possibly look into the surplus center at Arden Hills, which would mean we'd have to load them in a trailer, haul them. I don't think we'd get anything for them.
It's going to cost you $500 to do that.
Absolutely, yeah. I know what it costs, pull a trailer. And, but at least that way, we're compliant.
It'll probably end up costing the taxpayers more money doing that.
So in lieu of, and Glenn, I know you had a conversation, you and I had a ride on Friday, and you had a conversation with the auctioneer who recommended, you know, surplus out what you can through whatever means, you know, it's not going to be worth it with the, his time or what the auctioneer's fee would be, which would be about $1,000 or something. The, so we're probably talking about a couple of things, like make the property that has value available to someone who wants to pay something for it. And then we're left with our surplus. And whether or not that ends up out at, you know, restore or the landfill or whatever, so...
A lot of those items there are going to be a pay to dispose.
Right.
You know, I mean, there's, a lot of this stuff is less than a break even. And to properly dispose, like the monitors and stuff for $15, the printers, if it's an HP, might be able to go to Goodwill because they have, some of them have contracts with the suppliers that will take them at no charge and they try to reclaim the metal. But, I mean, they're, we fight this all the time. We've got a basement full of it, and then when you can't move in it, you go through the process. And it costs us a lot of money to get rid of things that have no value.
And the question I just asked Sharon over, but like the printer, is there information on that printer? Because like printers can start, so then that printer should actually be destroyed. The hard drive should be.
Yeah, the hard drives have to be pulled and destroyed.
So then the, yeah, the mid-printers.
Those can be erased.
I mean, we gotta be very, I mean, I agree, you know, if you sell a stuff and what's left is, is...
Right.
Well, would it be appropriate to adopt a motion to direct staff to follow the proper means to dispose of the surplus?
I wish it just disposed of the furniture, don't go, I would say, I would make a motion, staff make proper means to dispose of the items at city hall that they no longer need.
Unneeded items.
Unneeded items at city hall, yes.
So that's a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
To do what?
To dispose of unneeded items at city hall.
Can you sell, could you say sell and/or dis...
Well, that's fine, sell or, I would, I would, yes, sell or...
Right. Because if they can get some money for something, right?
Correct. I'd be fine with that.
Yeah.
So motion and second. So motion and second. Kyle, you have the language. Discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor, my only question, Sharon, does this allow you enough time to sell, I mean, this expediate thing, we got to be, you got to be out of City Hall in two, less than two weeks. Are you going to put it in cold storage and sell it out there or?
We're going to try to get rid of it in place if we can. And your vote tonight or your support, we'll start on it tomorrow.
Otherwise, can we put it in the storage out at the feed store so that it is no value so we can dispose of it at the landfill in the spring?
We'll take care of it.
I'm just saying, how do you get the word out that quick that this stuff is going to be available? I mean, it's...
Probably on the garage sales site.
Marshall garage sales site, you put a A-frame out front saying stuff for sale.
No, you put $5 on it and then look the other way and it goes away. You put three, it stays.
Other discussion on the motion. If not, we'll move to a vote on that motion. Close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which would be the Agenda Item Number 14. This is the 2020 Census Update. Kyle, this is yours. Kyle Box, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is, I think, the fourth time we've given a different version of this presentation, so hopefully I have it down by now. So I just kind of want to remind everybody tonight to bring to everyone's attention, the council and the audience, either in here or at home, that the census is coming up in April, April 1st of 2020. And this is just a kind of a quick informational piece that we want to run through, 10 minutes or less. So we'll go through here. So just a kind of a brief timeline of the census, what we can expect here, starting in 2020. The first part of March here, invitations will be sent to households to respond to the census online. This is the first year that the census will be doing a majority of the responding or collecting information online. Up to 80% of households nationwide will be receiving that invitation. The Bureau is expecting about 45% of people to respond to that first, that initial invitation. The 26th through the 3rd will be, if you haven't responded by then, you'll be receiving a postcard in the mail reminding you to respond. And that is always the option to respond online, over the phone, or traditionally over, through the mail. And then April 1st is Census Day. I'd like for the city to consider doing some sort of, with our Complete Count Committee, doing some sort of event to recognize the importance of the census and just to kind of celebrate that day. Even after, we'll continue, the census doesn't stop on April 1st. If you haven't responded, they're going to, the Census Bureau will keep sending reminders. And this will be the second and, or the third reminder here. And there's one more time, a final reminder. And if you haven't responded by the, between that last date, door knockers or enumerators will be coming to the door. That'll start April 28th through Labor Day. We're being told that census workers will be contacting anyone who hasn't responded to the census up to six times. We can expect, depending on what funding is available through the federal government, probably three phone calls and three door knocks. To be determined. What types of census form and enumeration are, that we can kind of expect? So the short form, this is what everyone is used to. This is your questions that you fill out, your group quarters forms. This is for like Southwest Minnesota State University, SMSU, jails, nursing homes, vocational facilities, respond group quarters forms. And then they're doing enumeration, straight to enumeration for Native American reservations. One of the questions that comes up more than you think is, do you have to answer every question on the census? And you do not, although we encourage everyone to fill out a complete census. Feel, it's more important to complete what you feel comfortable completing. Just expect a follow-up visitor, a phone call from an enumerator if you don't complete that. We want to be clear on this as well. There will not be a citizenship question on the 2020 census. The state of Minnesota, along with, I believe, a couple of dozen other states, had filed a lawsuit against the federal government when this was proposed to be put on the census. And I believe June of this year, that lawsuit was redacted or withdrawn because the census or the federal government is no longer opposing to have that question on the form. So we want to make sure we're clear on that as well. Who has access to that, to your data? Not the White House, not FBI, not the CIA, not other government agencies. Only Census Bureau employees have that, access to that information. It's protected by Title 13, federal law. It's protected for 72 years. So our 2020 census data is protected until 2092. And I'm not going to care if who knows what about me in 2092. So it's also important, we just want to let people know that as well. So this is where we really want to focus with our, with Marshall and Minnesota and nationwide. But historically, the census has missed a certain group of people. And we know, and we, everyone, we know who, we know who we are missing. Young children, people of color, indigenous people, and urban and rural low-income households. These are coming back at disproportionately high rates. So in Minnesota, as a whole, we have approximately 1.3 million renters. I believe in Marshall, we consider about half our population, half of our households are renters. 350,000 children under the ages of zero to four. This is, quite frankly, newborns. Kind of, parents forget that you had a kid within the last year. And I don't know how they do it. Mine are screaming all night, so I know you. But if you split households, something like that. So just make sure there's a plan in place to make sure which parent is counting the children. And then students attending universities. A lot of this can be handled by the group quarters process, where the university will actually provide a roster list of students living in the dorms. But it's for those off-campus students that are living in rented households. You have three, four, five kids living in a house. Who are they going to determine who's going to be the head of household for that, for that house and fill out that form accordingly? So the information, we're working with the university on how, and they have their own program as well, but to share that information and share that message citywide to make sure that number is counted or is accurate. And then for our racial and ethnic minorities, Marshall's a diverse community. We've started working, or we have finished, worked with the League of Minnesota Cities on our racial equity cohort the last 10 months. That wrapped up early this fall. So we've kind of identified where our, where our ethnic and racial minorities are in Marshall and how to communicate and where those leaders are with those different communities in Marshall. So making those contacts, having different events that go on to try and connect us all together and share that information is really important to us. And I believe, early next year, we'll be doing a second cultural conference with, it'll be hosted at the university. And that's kind of put on with our Community Services Department, along with other facilities, other departments, or other organizations throughout the city. So more information to come on that, but that's kind of one of the tools we'll be looking forward, looking to use with that. So in Minnesota, 965,000, that is the projected undercount statewide if there was no follow-up. So if we just sent out the, one notification, no follow-up, about a million people get being missed. So what does that mean to us? So this breaks it down by county and it breaks it down by city. So approximately 5,000 in Lyon County, again, this is without any follow-up, are projected to be missed. So what can we do? Impacts of the undercount. It's important to know, the impacts of the undercount, they stick with us for 10 years. It's, the appeal process is, as the mayor has explained in some of the present, or a couple of the presentations, we've gone through that. One year, I believe one of the dorms at SMSU was missed and we had to stay with that number for 10 years. So that's just really important, impacts of that undercount. So what are the impacts? The misallocation of federal funds. The state of Minnesota receives approximately $15 billion every year. So if we go back to this number, what does that $15 billion mean in the 4,900 and the 2,900? So Lyon County alone, for every, for 4,920 residents, $12.3 million a year that could potentially be missed out on federal funds or funding. So like I said, that's multiplied by 10. We're stuck with that 12.3 missed out on for 10 years. Marshall, 7.3 million. So that's the significance of funding for those. Decreased representation in Washington, DC. Minnesota is yet again on the verge of losing a congressional seat, dropping from eight to seven. Decreased growth in resources for our community. Census data helps plan roads, schools, hospitals, et cetera. And then businesses use our data to help locate or to build. So economic development is, this is one of the tools that they use for that. Like I said, on the verge of losing another congressional seat. These are the lists of states that are looking to gain and to lose. So the impacts of losing, going from eight to seven districts is about 100,000 person increase per district. So kind of put that in perspective, 100,000 people now trying to get to your representative, might make things a little bit more difficult. So this is difficult to see, but these are the 55 federal programs that $15 billion is allocated to throughout the state. Many great programs on here that are used and I don't need to go into detail on any of those. Like I said, the impacts of the undercount will last us for 10 years. Marshall has three census tracts. As you can see, the blue one on the north that follows mainly East College Drive and then goes up Main Street there. And then the east and the west basically is bordered by Saratoga Street. So what this information is, it's collected at the neighborhood level. Each track can provide detailed information for population, gender, age, income, race, education, language spoken, and even what percentage of the population has a computer and a smartphone. It's amazing what that kind of information is collected. It's not, and again, this is collected just at the neighborhood level or at the census tract level. So this is what I'm talking about when I mean, when economic development, they're using this data partially to kind of help make some of those determinations. So what are we doing? Like I said earlier this year, Marshall, the city council adopted or put in place a Complete Count Committee for the city of Marshall, a CCC. So we've kind of taken some of these tools and made them available to us. There's a commit to be counted form. That's now on the city website. Every time you visit the homepage, we're asking everyone to fill out that information. It helps us kind of tune our message to how we can communicate better with our citizens in Marshall. And it's important to know that this information is only, is collected by the city of Marshall and with the state of Minnesota. And will be destroyed at the end of the census. A help desk, which is new this year for the state, and we'll go, there's a slide on that. Census outreach, census marketing, social media, which again, this is going to play really big this year, or this census, because this is the first census that's online, are going to be responded to online. There's a lot of great material that the Census Bureau and the state demographers offices is providing on that. Content, we did apply for a, probably marketing materials and content, but we did apply for a grant, a couple of different grants. And we were awarded one grant in the amount of $750 to help kind of offset and purchase some promotional materials and just kind of whatever we can do to get the word out. And we'll be looking to apply for another $5,000 in January through a different Minnesota nonprofit council. So this is the commit to be counted form. This is what's going to pop up when you visit our website. This is the help desk. This is new this year. If you have any questions on the census, general questions, you can text MN2020. This goes to an automated help desk. And if the automated help desk can't help you, it actually will direct your question to somebody at the state demographers office who can help you out. This is actually, this is example of California's, but this is live now for Minnesota and it's available in Mung, Somali, Spanish. All the information is destroyed at the end of the census. Period. And then finally, I want to wrap up with jobs with the census. The Census Bureau, our census rep, Jim Mcursell, has been wanting to push jobs with the Census Bureau. Minnesota is actually looking for 40,000 applications statewide. I don't have our Lyon County numbers yet. We're working on that. But 40,000 applications that they want to take statewide to provide jobs and do your, to do the enumeration and door knocking and that. I believe starting pay at that is 1625 an hour and goes all the way up to 2750 an hour. So that's kind of their process and their timetable here. So that's all I have for tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, happy to take them.
Thank you, Kyle. And the Complete Count Committee will be active when we get closer to the actual Census Day. Questions for Kyle? If not, thank you. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 15. This is the Saratoga Street Reconstruction Project. We have a change order number three, the final change order and the final pay request. Questions? Glenn, anything to add?
No.
Is there a motion?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Any question?
Glenn, I just have a question. We had sidewalks that went from four inch to six inch or vice versa. Just curious why...
It's going through a driveway. So it's different quantities for different materials. So if the sidewalk goes through the driveway, it's six inch for that section.
But we increased, we increased the six inch and decreased the four inch. So wouldn't that be the four inch, so that'd be the driveway?
It would be driveways.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
My question, Glenn, there's an added fire hydrant.
MMU will pay for that.
Okay. Because I'm, again, in planning, I'm thinking, we know the property, we know the lines, we know the basic stuff. How can we miss a fire hydrant?
It wasn't missed, it was added by MMU.
And other questions? Move approval? I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If there is no discussion, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item. This is Agenda Item Number 16, Municipal Building Renovation Project, Consider the Proposal for Construction Testing Services with American Engineering Testing. Glenn?
That's for testing for the facility. We'd recommend approval.
Any questions? Craig?
Yeah, just how, do you think their estimates for volume needed are pretty close?
Yes.
Okay. And it's still, it's an à la carte, so all of it looks pretty reasonable if we have to do additional work. But that seems pretty reasonable in the scope of things for testing and...
Yes.
Especially with the crush and...
It's per units.
Yep.
One comment is that if in fact the test fails, the contractor is responsible for the payment of the retest.
Good to know. That's, that's good information. Thank you. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. The motion passes. So we'll move then to Agenda Item Number 18, Commission for Liaison Reports. Of my part, the Southwest Regional Development Commission met this past Thursday, final meeting of the calendar year. There'll be some turnover that is, normally happens on that board at the end of the year, as well as staff turnover. The longtime transportation planner with the Regional Development Commission retired, actually Friday was her last day. And there's a replacement in place for that person. The, Glenn and I then also attended the ATP Mendot Area Transportation Partnership Board Meeting. It was held in Winstead, Minnesota. On that Friday, I represent the Regional Development Commission on the ATP. This was the initial meeting of this round where they, they evaluate and recommend transportation projects in the Mendot District Eight that have federal funding applied to them. And this would be, right now, looking at the year 2025 is the year we were looking at. So it's a, it's an involved process, but it's an important process for allocating the federal dollars, some of the same dollars that Kyle was talking about earlier that are based on census and demographics. With that, Craig?
Mr. Mayor, none of mine have met since we last met and the Southwest Emergency Communication Board meets tomorrow. I just, actually, and Alex had informed me that one of the grants that he applied for, I'm going to kind of call it Merit Center, but it's really not Merit Center because it's pretty much everything. But he, we had spoken earlier about the benefit of having a drone with forward-looking info... But he, we had spoken earlier about the benefit of having a drone with forward-looking infrared. Pretty highly technical, extremely useful. And he informed me tonight before the meeting that the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Foundation approved $10,000 for a drone with FLIR. And they actually test FLIR today. And that's pretty impressive, and I really give him credit for getting out in front of that and having that technology available. There's a lot of application for that. And Burlington Northern recognizes it because if the, God forbid, we had a, some type of a disaster, FLIR works very good for not having to put personnel in to view where things are at, and you can delineate a lot of things with that, especially on a large spill. So hats off to Alex. Thanks, man. That's all I have.
Steve?
So the Economic Development Authority met today, and we had a lot of good discussion. Dakota Business Bank gave us, or Dakota Business Finance presented Chamber of Commerce and the EDA with a $500 check presentation. They give money to places that do business with them, and a lot of competition, and they gave $500, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it is. I mean, they've got a lot of people, so it was good to, the gentleman, Dan Parks, I believe was his name, came from South Dakota and presented that to Brad Gruhat. We talked about advertising for the EDA and a connect magazine that gets through the entirety of southern Minnesota. And hopefully through the decisions we make, we'll get some return on that investment. Jeff Gladys presented the Small Cities Grant update. They've got six houses built, I believe, and they're going for a couple more. And they're trying some new stuff with different models of homes that'll hopefully bring more people in. And that statement is correct. He said that about 46% of the houses in Marshall are rented. So that's pretty, pretty impressive. And most cities have about 30% rental. We have 46, so. And then I'll let John talk about the rest, so I don't hog it all.
Glenn?
My commissions have not met.
John?
Just to add on to what Steve was just talking about, the small business grants that Jeff Gladys is working on amounts to about 1.4 million dollars for the city of Marshall and improvements in both commercial and housing. Needs to be owner-occupied housing within a target area. And just to the public out there, stay tuned, because there's going to be some additional advertising and comments going on. We've got some slots left open for owner-occupied housing, which is why we were talking about the rentals. They do not qualify, but for coming in and doing work on the house, getting it updated and do some improvements on the house, and it's a 10-year forgiveness. So things to be aware of. The Utilities Commission did meet tonight. They're probably wrapped up by now, but they were in session while we were in session, so I was not able to attend.
Russ?
CVB will meet tomorrow, and the other two boards have not met.
And Jim?
Mine have not met.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Jim, what's on your end?
Um, you know, we always comment, it was hard work with the budget with the staff, but I also want to thank all the citizens who've come up and give input to myself, and I'm assuming you guys as councilmen, because I do relay the information to the city staff, and ultimately, it's a budget for the people of Marshall. So, you know, and when the citizens give comments, I don't care if they're negative, positive, or in-between. I like to hear those comments so I can relay them off to the staff on our budget. Our truth and taxation meeting last week was not very well attended. You know, that's our opportunity to talk, but, you know, throughout the year, I hear a lot about what we're doing, and I appreciate the citizens who do that, because without them, we don't have a city, plain and simple. The other thing I would like to say is, you know, with this being the holiday season, just to wish everybody happy holidays. And being a Star Wars fan, the last movie finally comes out Thursday.
And Russ?
I was able to attend a brief meeting at the city attorney's office regarding Broadmoor Valley, and I'll let Dennis explain more on that. Other, I echo what Jim said and wishing everybody a happy holiday. Thank you.
And same here.
Happy holidays to everyone out there, and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and light up the night. Coming up yet? Go enjoy it. We're going to have beautiful weekends. So hats off again to Tara and all the folks at Prairie Home Hospice with the work. That's an awesome community event, and I think it, it really speaks well for, for our community and for the, for that action group. So, thank you.
Steve?
Concur with everybody else. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be kind to one another.
Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Glenn. The, I had just a couple things I echo what everyone else said in terms of Christmas, New Year's greetings. The, two things. First off, the, I know Dr. Meisler has brought up in the past the importance of, you know, the 21 access. And now the, in the recommended budget reconciliation bill at the federal level, that is included. So should that pass, which is recommended that it, perhaps it passed today, I don't know, but the, that will be then a national standard. So it will not be up to each individual community or jurisdiction to make that policy. That would be a policy, so.
It's a good thing.
It's a good thing. It also means the Legislative Ordinance Committee doesn't need to deal with it individually. So, the other thing I'd mention, and Sharon, you may have some comments on this earlier, or in your part, but earlier, the, today, in fact, immediately before our meeting, Sharon and I met with the Schwan family leadership, ownership, and Schwan senior management of, of Schwan's company in Marshall. And they are nearing the successful separation of the business functions between, I'll call it CJ Schwan's and Schwan's Home Service, that is, which is really a massive endeavor to provide that separation for what were co-mingled business support functions. So they're nearing the successful separation of that. And I say successful because it was successful for both companies. And now, when that separation is complete, which is targeted for late February, correct, that Marshall will be home for two corporate headquarters, two corporate entities, whereas previously, we were the one with the Schwan Food Company. So all of that, I think, is good news. And the Schwan family and Schwan leadership really emphasized the importance of the employees in Marshall and that Marshall is their corporate home, and they intend to be successful as they grow their company based out of Marshall. That's all I have. We'll move to staff reports, and you can maybe fill in any blanks that I missed in that very positive meeting.
Yeah, the meeting with Schwan's was really positive. Paul Schwan was president, the son of Marvin and his two children. A couple of his children could not make it from San Diego. But really good to meet the senior leadership. They're interested in workforce development in terms of economic development. They have a number of long-term employees, and there'll be some, some opportunities in the future. And they are also interested in, you know, the, the work we're doing in branding and marketing and strategic planning and, and, you know, they're kind of going through some similar things that we are as well, just more so because of their changes. So it was good to get some contacts and emails, and we can exchange information going forward. One other thing I'll just briefly mention, since we're at the end of the year, and we've only got a couple weeks left, but, and I think I put this in the newspaper column, but 2019 overall was a really good year for the, for the building department and our community. Building permits were up over 2018, and total valuation was higher in 2019 over 2018. Recently, just even in November, we've had three permits for new homes and a couple larger expansions. One, the apartment building is going to add another unit or building in addition to the one that they have now on London Road. And then, of course, the action manufacturing expansion was a building permit that was pulled in, in November. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you, Sharon. Go ahead.
Thank you. Couple of things, Mayor and Council. One is we're in the middle of the move. And for the public too, you know, they're sending out some information, but we intend to be out of City Hall, moved into SMSU by the end of the year. And the asbestos and hazardous materials contractor, starting on or about the middle of, of January, and completing at the middle of February. And the, and the building contractor then moving in after the middle of February and continuing from there. So that's a, a big move, and we want to keep the public up to date on where we're at and where we're operating. The other thing is, is we would like to have a PINT meeting, Public Improvement in Transportation meeting soon. Our staff is putting together a schedule for that, but it's a big one for 2020, for public improvement projects for 2020. And like the rest of you, you know, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. It's a wonderful place to be. That's all I have.
Thank you, Glenn. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, as Councilmember Labatt indicated, I did have a meeting, several requests for inspections from our building department and the Department of Health have been received by me from various Broadmoor Valley residents. Under Minnesota statute, if we receive that complaint, we have to inspect. And so those, those come, requests for inspection were passed on to the building department for the city and also the Department of Human, uh, Human Services, health issues out there. So we would expect inspections, and if, if violations are found, then the landlord must repair them. And if not, the city does have some authority to proceed in court, to get a court order to compel compliance with building, housing, and health codes. And so, yeah, we met with several, several residents and the appropriate inspection departments to initiate that process.
Thank you, Dennis. We'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda, which are, include the information items, as well as a listing of upcoming meetings. And I'll ask at this time, at the final meeting of 2019, regular meeting, is there anything else to come forward in 2019? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion does pass.